Monday, August 29th, it is now 5:00 PM. I can proudly announce we're all here this evening. We have one item on the agenda, and I would like to remind council to be, once more, to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. Council will have a, receive an update on the city's existing traffic signal pole standards, and discuss recommendations for a revised standard to be used in the city. Rebecca Zook, Director of Engineering, and Luke Albert, City Traffic Engineer, to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We very much appreciate this opportunity this evening to come before you to continue a conversation that we started back on December 14th, when we were presenting an update regarding the traffic signal program, and where we are with the various intersections that we're constantly monitoring as they meet warrants, and bringing them before you for budget consideration. So this is a continuation, and ultimately, a much more detailed conversation about the city's traffic signal standards. This evening, we're going to provide you some information regarding our existing standards, which is a modular pole. We're going to talk about the benefits and challenges of those. Additionally, we're also going to talk about a proposed alternate standard, which is the ADOT signal pole. And then ultimately, we're going to talk about recommendations that we would ask the council to consider. So the existing modular pole, the benefits of those is, as you see here, a very finished look, a very sturdy structure. The street name signs are quite large. They are four foot by 10 foot. The actual...
Clear throat.
That's not me. The actual, the letters are approximately 11 inches high for the capital letters, and then eight or nine inches high for the smaller letters. The finished look comes from the fact that you have the actual signal heads and the street name signs embedded within the structure itself. And the sturdiness comes from the significant amount of steel that is utilized to create these structures. For example, this pole that you see before you is our largest pole, which has a 50-foot mast arm. These poles and mast arms weigh about 11,000 pounds. When we look at the challenges of these poles, the cost comes to mind right away because of the significant amount of steel that is utilized. The cost range anywhere from $450,000 to $525,000. Some of that cost is associated also with the construction challenges. And what I mean by that, if you look at where we've identified the large rectangular foundation, the foundation goes quite deep, but the top, or the cap of what we call, is a four-foot by six-foot by four-foot depth cap that, where the pole is embedded in. Because of the size of that cap, we often have relocations of existing utilities. Sometimes those can be as small as, say, a $10,000 relocation, or they can be as much as a $50,000 relocation, depending on the amount of constraint that we have out there and impacts. Additionally, the maximum signal arm length of these poles, and ultimately, it's because of their size and the weight that's associated with them, you can only get a 50-foot mast arm is the longest length you can have. I'll give you an example of where you might see that being a challenge is, as you're traveling northbound on Australia Parkway at McDowell, the mast arm length does not extend over the left turn lanes. It still meets all of the requirements. It doesn't have to be located directly over, however, for the driver, it may cause some confusion. Additionally, another challenge is the fabrication and the long lead time. What I mean by that is, I've also identified the vertical bolts and the horizontal bolts. That connection is made in the field when we are installing the signal. It typically takes about four hours of a road closure to be able to make that connection, and there are some times when those items actually don't line up in the field. Over the last five years, that's occurred five different times where we actually had to have either someone come out and make some sort of adjustment in the field, or actually had to send the, one of the, either the pole or the mast arm back to have it sort of adjusted at the shop. So, but it's a very complex connection point, so that does cause some concerns. And then the long lead item, and we've mentioned this before, once it is determined the actual size of the pole and mast arm that's needed based on the design, it takes approximately four months, maybe four and a half months, to get it fabricated and then shipped to us for installation. Now I would like for us to take a look at the ADOT-style poles. The cost of these poles is approximately $300,000. There is easier construction, both in the installation with respect to the foundation. For the largest mast arm and pole, it's a three-foot diameter, so a much smaller footprint, about a third to a half the size of the footprint that you would see with the largest foundation for the modular pole. In addition, the connection also occurs in the field between the mast arm and the pole, and it's a much easier connection. What we see with this is approximately a one-hour installation versus the four hours for the modular. There is an ease of replacement. Not only are these poles used throughout the valley at a number of cities that we can, I'll mention a few, but we have a chart later. Gilbert, Peoria, Chandler, Scottsdale are a number of the cities that use this. So there's an ease in replacement. Also with the lead time on these, although still long, is approximately 10 weeks to 12 weeks, so about two-thirds of the time. Finally, the mast arm length does extend up to 65 feet, which gets us that additional 15 feet across an arterial where we can extend our signal head over the appropriate turning I just wanted to show you a couple examples of where these poles are used. We just have some samples of the Greyhawk subdivision in Scottsdale. Kirland Commons uses these at their Phoenix and Scottsdale area. Scottsdale actually uses these poles throughout their city, and they have certain districts, and so they try to create those districts by using different colors, or some, the furniture that's around, or the light fixtures, things like that, to create some uniqueness. Additionally, we've shown you a picture in Vestancia in Peoria as well. The challenges of the ADOT-style pole is they are more susceptible to damage. So when they are struck by a vehicle, they may very well go out of service. Now, we can typically put them back into service and put them in a, in a safe manner so that we can continue utilizing them until we can bring a replacement pole in. Versus the modular poles, they often remain in operation even when struck by a vehicle. They, the challenge is also that there's a smaller street sign name associated with that. Now, what we see on the ADOT-style poles is about a two-and-a-half by eight-foot sign with letters from nine inches for the capital to seven inches for the smaller. The requirement through the manual on uniform traffic control devices is that the lettering be sized eight for the large and six for the small. So even with the smaller signage or lettering, it still meets all of the federal requirements. And then finally, the perception is that there is a less finished look. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Luke. He's going to go over sort of this table that captures everything, and then he'll add anything that I have neglected to share with you.
Mayor, members of the council, recommendation this table shows the comparison, a summary comparison between the modular poles and the ADOT poles. As Rebecca mentioned, their modular poles are very sturdy, have the large street name signs, and the more finished look, but they do cost about $150,000 to $225,000 more than the ADOT poles. They do cause some construction challenges, and also, they, the ADOT poles have longer mast arm lengths, and save about six weeks of lead time when you're ordering them, and are much, much more predominantly used throughout the Phoenix metro area. With that, we're going to share some recommendations on the introduction to alternate pole standard in Goodyear. Showing this slide, or a couple of ADOT-style poles, the one on the left is actually in Goodyear that was installed by ADOT as part of the I-10 303 interchange. It's at I-10 Cervel Avenue, and it's, both of these poles are like an enhanced ADOT-style pole, and the enhancements on the existing pole to the left are the powder coating brown to match the other traffic signals in Goodyear, as well as the street name sign, the illuminated street name sign Rebecca talked about that has the Goodyear logo on it. And then on the right, a possible, like, future enhancement would be the, like, a decorative fixture. As LED technology evolves and more fixtures become available, we could look into like a decorative fixture that would work on the major streets in Goodyear. Showing on this graphic, and the green area shown in this graphic is where we would be recommending the introduction to the alternate standard, and the blue area kind of shows where we already have a lot of the modular signals, and would not recommend the introduction of mixing the two together on corridors. So, going, looking at the green area, we'd be looking at along Camelback Road and west of Loop 303, as well as the Australia area, like, south of Lumwash, or south of, what they call the Mountain Ranch area. And those are areas where we don't have any existing modular signals at all. So it would be, it would be a kind of a clean introduction of the ADOT-style poles, and we already have them along the 303 corridor from the ADOT construction that would provide somewhat of a transition into these areas. And then as well, going south, Australia and south, it's wide open for traffic signals. We don't have any traffic signals, like, south of West Star Drive in Australia right now.
And if, if I could jump in here and just add one more consideration, is for potential place-making opportunities, like we've actually seen in some of the other cities. We've seen that in Tempe, in Mesa, and certainly in Scottsdale. So potentially, the Ballpark Village could be considered, as well as we, a couple weeks ago, we had planning present before you on some ideas for the West Goodyear area. It could be something where we could work with our planning department to propose some sort of district enhancements with place-making identity and furniture that might go with it for the right-of-way, and different things like that. And with that, that concludes our presentation. However, we would very much love to entertain any questions or comments that you have for us this evening.
Sure, we have quite a few, so who would like to start? Sherilyn, would you like to start?
I had a question. I spent a couple hours yesterday driving around in various communities and around Goodyear, and one of the signs that I noticed that really isn't mentioned here, and I couldn't figure out whether it was modular or an ADOT-style that had been modified. And that was, it was the pole, but it did have the square, but they were the round piping rather than the squared off ones, which left room for larger signs, because as an aging population, I being one of them, I really love the larger signs, because it also tells you which hundred block you are, north or south, or east or west, which I find very, very helpful. And I just wondered, where does that fit?
So that's the, what they call the trombone-style pole, and those are used in both Avondale and Buckeye. They kind of have a mix of ADOT-style and then the trombone-style poles, and they're also very expensive. From talking to Buckeye recently, they're over $500,000 as well, so they'd be very similar to what we have for the modular poles, but just kind of a rounded look instead of the squared-off look that the modular poles have. But very similar in cost, though, to the modulars.
The signage is smaller, but it's still hanging in the center, so it's much easier to read and see. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, you're going to go right to me, aren't you? I think, I think I'm going to be in the minority about this. I have always, and I'll be blunt, hated the traffic poles we have now, and I didn't like them then when they went up in Tempe. And I remember when they kind of went up and after they redid Mill Avenue for the Pope and all that, and they started putting those up. I always thought they looked very industrial, very, very, like, they should be in a warehouse district type of thing. That's what they always looked to me. And when I see them going up Australia, since we had this last conversation, I've really been looking, even when going on vacation around Disneyland, they've got more of the ADOT pole in California and areas there. So I've been looking at this. My family thinks I'm kind of freaky doing that, but, but when you, when you look at, like, areas where there's, there's mountains, like, going up to Australia, and you see that big, heavy posts, you know, you've got four of them, and then you've got the one on the other side, so I think it's, what, eight for an intersection heavy post, you're really making, you know, the view. And that's why I don't like them, and I've never liked them. I like the fact we can get almost as large of, as letters. They're not teeny-tiny letters, they're still good-sized letters on the post. And so aesthetically, when you say finished look, for me personally, I've never thought those looked finished. I always thought they looked kind of warehousey, and didn't look really homey and community and, you know, you know, community-type traffic lights. Maybe more like small town is what I was thinking when I see the other ones. I see more of a community feel, not like industrial. So I am good with switching them. I like the plan you have to switch them, and I like the options to have the little lights. So in, like, areas of Australia, you can put the little light there that kind of goes with our lights. You could kind of blend it in. I appreciate you looking into that. And I think the plus for our citizens is we're talking about all these needs. For personally, I think we get a better-looking product for less money, but that might just be my, and I may be totally outvoted by everyone else, but that's just my thoughts. I do have one question, though, about the industrial-looking ones, I don't know, the posts. I know that one by Walgreens has been repainted at least once, and it's already fading again. What is the difference between the maintenance of those?
So the maintenance is similar in the, you would expect to repaint about every 10 years. The one by Walgreens, just for whatever reason, kind of had some premature paint failure, I guess you could say. And I haven't honestly noticed the fading again, but we'll certainly look into that, because it was painted within the last year, so...
Yeah, someone said it was starting, and I have to look at that one again.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, then.
And just for my other council members before I'll be quiet here, there's something else that Phoenix did a couple times with their traffic lights and their poles. It's like when they wanted to rebrand their area, they painted some of them purple for the suns, and then they redid it for Copper Square. So I think there's a lot we can do with them in different areas, so that's my thoughts.
Great. Wally?
Well, Sheri, I agree with you on most of the stuff. I, when I came on council and found out that our streetlights cost $450, I mean, $450,000, I almost fainted, because I felt that if we did a cheaper pole, we could do more intersections. And I could never quite understand how we ended up with such an expensive product. They do look nice, but I'm not real thrilled with them, and especially in Australia, because when you're going up the hill, you've got this vision of what you think it's going to look like, and then you come around that water turner thing, what, turnabout?
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, you see these big things hanging over, and it really ruins the view of the beautiful lights going right on up on Australia Parkway. So I love the idea that we could do different colors, perhaps, to designate different areas, and perhaps doing the lights on top. I don't think it's going to diminish the beauty of our town. It's just going to possibly show that we're interested in developing different areas so we're not all the same, possibly. But I just think it's a great idea. I didn't realize those were ADOTs. I can't imagine ADOT coming up with something so clever.
Don't let that get out to me.
No, I know, but I mean, it's just amazing. It, you know, I just figured it'd be something else, but it just, I think they could be very, very nicely put, and I think it would help us do some of the intersections we don't have any lights in now, because we don't, we're budgeting so much other stuff, sometimes our lights lose a little bit of our priority. And I think if we thought about a less expensive type of light, and then be creative with colors, or placements, or whatever we need to do, I think it would work very well, and I think our residents would enjoy it. So thank you for bringing it forward. I'm sure you're tired of us complaining.
Joe?
I'm somewhat on the...
Other side.
Same, no, same pages as Sheri and you. Couple things I really like is the fact that when you said there was an accident, you can get, get them up, or when you're putting them up, takes about an hour versus four. So that means you're not a, you don't have a backup in traffic as you go through. The one question I had, as you say, they're easier to take out from a car if they happen to hit one, would we stock a couple, just in case, so that we would not have that problem as far as, you know, have to wait 10 weeks or whatever to replace, or you have to kind of mess with it, to get it up there until a new one comes in? I think that would be helpful. But going over what you've got up there, you know what, I kind of like the, first of all, I think from a money standpoint, and I'm not sharing anything different than anybody else, as we move forward into the future, in my view, we're in this new economy, we're not going to be growing our revenues like we had 10 years ago. We're going to have challenged meeting some of these demands we have out there, and the $200,000 spread to me is quite sizable. And I really like, we were over in Scottsdale for the League of Cities this past week. I have no problem with those lights. To me, they look fine. I could see them, I could see the street, street signs and the whole work. So I like the idea of how you've broken the areas up where we can try some of those. It makes it difficult to kind of mix and match where you are already if made that decision. That wouldn't look probably right. But I can see where maybe the Sports Village, or a couple of the other things, or even as you get farther south there in Australia, and we get into Mobile and all that, where we can start putting some of these in. Like Wally says, you can put more in, because they're cheaper, and the areas you've highlighted, I'm kind of on board.
Great. Joanne?
I'll start with a couple of questions. So this, the $300,000 for the ADOT-style, you, does that include the decorative lamp?
So basically, it, it's a round number of 300,000. It could be 290, it could be 310, but it's based on the average, and yes, it would include already the powder coating and some sort of decorative lighting. None of that's been finalized, we're simply presenting some options to you, but when, if we were to move forward with considering this, we would absolutely not want to add anything in that's going to change the cost, because that's where we're really looking at this, for our cost savings.
I understand that. I think that some of the allure of the other ones was that decorative lamp, and so that would be important. The, when you said that the ADOT poles are more, well, they're not as sturdy, so do we have a frequency of, have you, have you looked at how many poles a year go down? What does this cost us to replace? Are these under insurance? I mean, you know, as you weigh out things like that, if they're not as sturdy, how often are we really even talking about? Once a year, you know?
Well, I don't have the information related to how often our existing signals get hit, but that would be the, it would be the same incidence of, or number of times, so we can certainly pull that information together. But back to Councilmember Pazillo had asked the question about, would we have some in stock? And the answer would be absolutely yes. And we actually do have the modular poles in stock. Some, that's dwindling down. Back over 10 years ago, there was several poles in each size that were purchased at that time that we have been using, and then replacing as damage occurs, or as they are used. So very similar, we would do that with the ADOT poles, and we actually, Luke, I'd like you to chime in here, we do have some already.
Yes, so there used to be a traffic signal at I-10 in Cotton Lane, as well as one just recently, that was taken down at the I-10 eastbound frontage road in Cotton Lane. So when those were taken down, they were returned to the city's inventory, actually, as part of the ADOT project. So we do have some in stock from those that we could deploy if we needed to, in the event of a car crash into a pole.
Okay. So, okay, you know, it's kind of funny how this, this conversation is almost like art, you know? In a way, everybody's going to have a different feeling about it. And, you know, especially when we're talking about place-making, and we're talking about the image of our city, when, when these poles, the modular poles, first came into play, I remember how it, it just felt, it was new, we were different. It set us apart from, you know, especially when, when our city boundaries run into our neighbor's city boundaries, and you're never quite sure which city you're in, you know, it kind of felt like, oh, you're in Goodyear. Besides the fact that we had the lagging left, you know, but it was just a difference. You knew when you were in Goodyear. And so when I, when I've looked at this, and I understand the thoughts, you know, especially, you know, like what you stated, Sheri, when you're in an area that is more of a neighborhood, does it seem like we need to have the pole that is, in your feeling, obtrusive to, to the area? And so, and so I can respect that. But to the borders of Goodyear, I feel, just as we put our signs, I think you need to say, this is Goodyear. And so when you have a major intersection that you're entering Goodyear, to me, that pole should be that modular sign, because that, that's the difference that says we're Goodyear. However, in Australia, in neighborhoods, in intersections that aren't the heavy McDowell and Litchfield or anything like that, I think that place-making is very important, and you could have those decorative lights, the ADOT light, you know? And I think that the color change could be kind of cool. I mean, my goodness, the Indians in Reds would probably love to have red poles, you know? I mean, but some of that would, would be pretty neat. And then, but one other thing, too, back to Sherilyn's input, the size of that lettering, I know, I hear a lot of people say they appreciate. So I wondered, I don't know, this is the engineer side that has to come in, because I'm just thinking creative. I don't know if you can take that same size, what was it, four foot by...
Four foot by 10.
And you frame it like it's, if, if the ADOT pole could hold it, I don't know. But, but it would be, it would still look, then, similar to some of the others. So that's kind, I think they need to stay brown, unless you are specifically place-making, you know, for an area. And, you know, you can't argue with the price, there's no doubt. I mean, I don't have, I hate to say it this way, but, you know, when you talk about lead time and installation, as few as we put in a year, that doesn't really concern me as much, because we've been planning for it for a year, so, you know, I'm sorry, that doesn't, four hours to one hour, it's not a big deal to me. But I guess that's kind of, I think that it's, it's understandable, and there's places that we certainly can, can make changes. That's my feeling.
Bill?
I've got a couple of questions first. The first glaring thing that came to me is, why are we even talking about this? Did this come up somewhere? I've not, I don't recall this ever coming up in a strategic initiative, or with a developer, that there's a cost issue, so I'm curious, why... So I'm curious, why are we, why are we even having this discussion?
From my recollection, uh, over the last year and specifically on December 14th, when we were talking about the program, uh, we brought up the idea of potentially, uh, using a different, uh, signal type. And it was, uh, a recommendation that we go back and further study where we would propose that to go.
I guess I haven't, I haven't seen the initial, why did that, why did we even have that meeting on the 14th? I guess was kind of, that was a thing that came out of the blue. And I realized we said, go back and get more information and come back. So I get why we're here tonight, but I don't, why, I'm still unclear why we even initiated the conversation.
Well, ultimately, every year, um, around the December timeframe, we're going to be coming before you to talk about our traffic signal program, to update you as to where we are with the various signals that we're always studying. Again, that came out, um, when we were back talking about some of the other signals where there were some concerns brought by council. And so we committed at that time to always come forward to you and share with you where we are with our, uh, warrants and what signals we're looking at. And then ultimately proposed to you about, at that time in December, before the budget really gets, um, deep into it, so that you all can consider, uh, what funding you might want to consider for that budget year.
Okay. Thanks for trying to fill that in for me. The, um, do our current codes or standards allow for placemaking variances with the use of different street lights and traffic signals? Do our, do we, is that allowed right now in our current design standards?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Does Christopher know?
I think some, I think that can be answered.
Here comes Christopher.
Yeah. Christopher, I know you can answer this.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Could you repeat the question again, so I'll make sure I got all of it?
Do our current, uh, I don't want to say building codes, because I know it's not in the building code, but, uh, ordinances, codes, design standards, et cetera, do they allow for a variance initiated by the developer to change the standard of light poles, traffic signals? You know, that placemaking thing we're talking about? I thought our design standards were, have been modified to be flexible enough to allow that to happen anyway.
The, if you're referring to design guidelines, which is a perfect segue into our next development mini-series, by the way, um, they are intended to be flexible. There are minimum, um, expectation so that if a developer is proposing something different, it all affords us the opportunity to consider it. Additionally, um, often since many of you know that we primarily work with PAD zoning, where that has to come before both the planning commission and the council, um, if they were going to propose an alternative, um, maybe not a, a warrant standard, but a different fixture or furniture, if you will, that we would have that debate at that time as well, that consideration at that time.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Stip, and I didn't hear the part about could a developer propose a different standard? In, in our, uh, ordinances or code today, we would not consider anything but a modular pole.
Okay. So, yeah, their, their lives are...
Correct.
Okay. Um, thank you. Because I thought we had had some flexibility and, all right. Um, I, I guess the, the genesis of that question is that, um, we are trying to impose upon a developer, um, we want placemaking here. And if they don't want to develop it that way, we haven't necessarily done that. And I wanted to make sure that we had the flip side of it. If a developer came to us and said, I've got this great idea and I want to do this, can I do it if we've got the flexibility? So hopefully, as part of the discuss, because right now, we're talking about hardware. We're talking about the hanging light in the street. But with that hanging light comes the policies and the rules that back it up and the flexibility to make the change. So if we're going to talk about placemaking as part of this discussion, then we have to have a discussion about changing the language to allow just what you, what you talked about. So that was another question slash statement. Um, have we gotten any feedback from P&amp;Z on this idea? P&amp;Z is the one who takes the initial setup and they're really, they lay a good foundation for us to make some, some decisions. Have we brought this to P&amp;Z to get their feedback? I assume not.
So, uh, no, because today it's just to consider the policy question about would we be open to using something different than the modular pole? Once we begin, if, if that's allowed, then we would begin looking at what would be the design consideration, which would then be worked out with development services and planning and then potentially be taken to P&amp;Z.
Me personally, I'd like to hear P&amp;Z's opinion before I go, before I vote on this. I don't know why you're shaking your head, Wally. They're the ones who do our design work for us.
Yeah, but we're the ones that come up with the idea. And that's why we're discussing it, to see if we want to go forward.
I got it. I'd like to hear what P&amp;Z has to say about the idea of changing it. Because what we're talking about is changing the, we're talking about changing the way the city looks. And we're talking about zoning our city, not from a zoning perspective, but saying, if you live west of the 303, you're going to have a different kind of traffic light. And if you live south of Willis Road, you're going to have a different kind of a traffic light. So we're talking about breaking up the personality of our city. And whether you like what we have or not, there's a lot of things about the city that I don't like, but you know what? We got it and we got to live with it. Traffic lights is one of them. We have a standard and we've set a pretty high bar in the community. And, uh, Sherilyn was talking about the, the rounded traffic light. That's in the community right next door to us. And you clearly know when you cross from Avondale to Goodyear, and you know when you cross from Goodyear into Buckeye. There's no question about that. And I think that's what sets Goodyear apart. And the traffic light is the delineation. So if we're going to do that within our own community, I'd like to make sure that, um, we look at those unplanned and undeveloped areas with a planning and zoning lens. That's all, just to get their opinion. Now, that may be the, we, you need us to say that or not, I, I don't know. But that's personally how I feel. I'd like to hear from P&amp;Z because I really trust, they look at that stuff constantly. We get it, you know, after they've seen it. So I think we owe it to them to listen to what they have to say as they, they are the front door to our design standard. That's just, that's just my opinion. We've all got an opinion on this. Um, and then finally, is there, um, I'm, I'm looking at that area south of Willis in my mind because you're going to travel down Estrella Parkway.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, modular, 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 and then there's going to be this, and we're going to have this new standard. And, and as I was sitting here thinking, is there, is there a way to keep the modular on Estrella Parkway? And then anything that branches off of that, we go to this new standard? Is that a, I don't know how that works from a developer perspective, but, you know, if you look at maintaining a corridor, if you will, in Estrella Parkway being that, that corridor. So when you're driving down that main road, you're like, okay, nothing's changed. And then when you get off into the side, side streets, um, which would more be the feeders and some of the others that require a traffic light or a business, the Walgreens that put in a traffic light, you know, right by Elliott up there, changing the standard for those. So it's not as, it's not an in-your-face, hey, you, you are now crossed into a new section of the city, but we've incorporated both designs? So it's less? Have we looked at that? Is that, is that even feasible?
Certainly, that would be a, something we could consider. But we actually chose this because, um, of the Lum Wash and the separation from the neighborhoods to the north. And as you enter down into the Montecito and Cantomea areas, that we thought that that was a, um, good change in the, um, standards because some of the other standards change, wall colors change, other things change as you enter into that area. So we thought that that was a good place to make that transition.
Okay. Um, so with all of that, that was, the thing that, that, you know, you'll, you hear from folks in Estrella is, oh, the north part of the city gets everything. Then they talk to the people in the central part of the city and they're like, well, north and south get everything. Look at Estrella. And you have to have that discussion about CFDs and all the rest of that. But, um, we have that quote unquote internal competition going on already. And I'm fearful that, that this change of design is going to only, uh, fuel that. Personal opinion. Um, whether, whether you like them or don't like them, I think is, is irrelevant. I'm just worried about what's, what is that going to do for the future of our community, especially in those un, uh, undeveloped areas? So I, I don't have an opinion necessarily. I'm very concerned to hear from P&amp;Z, to hear some of these other options. And I'm open to hearing it. I mean, I'm not telling you I'm closed, but that's kind of where I stand.
Um, yes, Mayor, Council, I will say that if the policy direction that you all provide engineering tonight is to evaluate some other opportunities, um, we've had some discussions with P&amp;Z. We just presented them, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we just presented them the West Goodyear, uh, work product that we presented to you previously. And as Rebecca indicated earlier, that, uh, concept of maybe a different, um, streetscape, furniture streetscape or fixture in the streetscape, uh, right-of-way appearance was brought up and they were very much engaged in that conversation. So if, if you provide that direction, um, to Rebecca and, and engineering, we'll certainly collaborate and get that from the planning commission if we need to.
Uh, Council wants additional speaking. I'll speak, I'll hold it back. But, um, Joe, you had a second?
No, I just, I just want to say, I, I have no problem with this recommendation. I respect, uh, Councilmember Stip's opinion.
Recommendation, recommendation came from them.
What, what is coming from them. My concern is if you're spending $500,000 and you've gone down a track and all of a sudden say, we can't change spending 500 because everything has got to be the 500,000 or we break up the city. From my perspective, and again, this is just my humble opinion, um, I'm always looking, we're 10, 20% developed. We've got to find a way to still have that look and feel. And for me, when I'm driving, trust, uh, from my perspective, the lights ain't it. Okay? It just isn't. You know, it's the last thing I look at as far as the feel and whatever. Um, and that's just my, my opinion. I have no problem trying to save us some money by looking in areas where we can make those transitions. Uh, and I have no problem, uh, moving forward with the recommendation.
Thank you. Joanne, you had a second word?
I had one other question. Um, you had a map in there which was showing the fiber optics and interconnectivity, and you didn't address that at all. And I, my question was, what will it take to coordinate McDowell and Yuma? Um, so I don't know why this map was in here showing that because we didn't even discuss it and...
Uh, ma, oh, sorry. Uh, Mayor, Lord, Councilman Osborne, that map was shown primarily just to show the existing locations of traffic signals.
Okay.
And how you could see in that blue area how, um, developed the traffic signal network already was, not to introduce more traffic signals, but, but it was, yeah, strictly just, uh, to, to show where we currently have traffic signals.
Okay. But still, I have that question. So if you can, later on or, or something, um, get back to me, what's it going to take to make these coordinated for those specific areas? Okay. Thank you. And that was, again, that was McDowell and Yuma. And, um, and I know there's, I, you know, I understand, uh, there's going to be people that, we all have different opinions as obviously we heard. Um, I, I still believe though that, um, the image of our city at least needs to show it at the borders when you enter in our city and you know you've entered Goodyear. That's how I feel.
Sheri?
I have one question and then I have one comment. The question is, on the border areas, um, like when we have the border with Avondale, who pays like on McDowell for those larger traffic lights? Do we share the cost or how does that work? Yeah.
Yeah, Dicert and, uh, and McDowell and that famous corner.
It's generally controlled by the agency that, that, um, that owns the corridor, um, like, um, but if there's a development, um, share of some kind, um, then you might have a developer possibly participate in a traffic signal even though, like if they're located in Goodyear but, but have a corner of an avenue intersection, I guess that, that would be a possibility. But generally, it's the agency, which is in the Phoenix Metro Area Civil Agency on the east and the agency on the, uh, north that controls the, the corridor, um, for, for streets that have a city border along them.
Okay. That was my question. So if we do add this type, the $500,000, I mean, it's, we're upgrading then Avondale or Buckeye or, you know, so it, it could be on our dime to upgrade it if, if we want the higher standard? That's what, that's what I question. We're talking about the gateway areas. I just want to make clear.
If we, if we control that corridor, then yes, we pay for it all.
And so we get to choose what type we put in there then?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And then my comment is, I'm okay with having different neighborhoods. Um, I think I agree with Joe 100% that the, the traffic lights don't matter that, I mean, not they don't matter, but that's not the end-all for me because honestly, when I'm driving in my car, I'm, I'm looking at the road. I'm, I'm just, sometimes, you know, you drive, you don't really, I'm in my car commuting an hour and a half every morning and an hour and a half coming back every day. I see lots of traffic lights. I can't tell you specifically which one is which one as I drive through three cities to get to work. Um, so that is the end-all, be-all, but I'm okay with them for the aesthetic, for the different communities. I think that does what makes Goodyear great is all the different communities and all the differences. I chose to live in Estrella because I like that open lifestyle. Some people choose to live in Palm Valley because they may like the golf or Pebble Creek. And I don't think it's a bad thing pitting people against each other. I think it's more of, but we just have different areas. Um, so my other question was, is if we do go down this road and we decide like a community like in Estrella, would that be something if the community, you know, as a whole said, you know what, we really like this other type of there? Is that something you can change out or do they have to stay where they're at to make it consistent?
We had not considered removing any of the existing.
Okay. So it would just be further on from Willis then?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Sherilyn?
Well, I have to admit, the first time, and it was years ago, Tempe must have been using these for a long time because I don't drive Tempe very often, that I was struck with the, the light and I don't know, it was one of the intersections right off of the, uh, I-10. I thought, wow, I can read these, the street, you know, they're proud. And, and I, I was positively impressed with that. However, I don't think as a person that's making the decision throughout the city how we're going to act, I don't like the fact that I find that McDowell and, uh, Pebble Creek Parkway, uh, sign where it, it can only go 50 feet and it's obvious that, that you're, there, the arrows in the wrong lane. I find that, um, a little unsettling. Not that I go through that signal every day, but I do find it unsettling. And I've had a couple of people mention to me, why is that? And I never knew the answer until we were, we were going through this. I really like the idea that there is a solution to that, that you can use the, the longer arm so that you, you don't have that confusion because even one accident is too many. And the other thing is, I remember, um, probably it was in the November, December era when we were trying to figure out how we could put some, uh, signals in where it hadn't been budgeted for this year and how are we going to find the money and how are we going to do it? It was going to be a million dollars. And the, just the very knowledge that we could put three signals in for, uh, instead of two, I think it deserves very serious consideration. And, and that's kind of, um, I'm leaning, I, I think we're all pretty much saying the same thing. We don't have to have the same thing at every corner, that there needs, that we do need to, to budge off of that rigidity. And if we can put in, make more corners safe, then I think that's incumbent upon us to look at that seriously.
Thank you. Did you have one more?
I did.
Yes. Bill?
On that note, however, every single intersection that we talked about adding a light to is in this blue area, which is not under consideration for installation of the new light. Correct?
Mm-hmm. In today's world, yes.
Yeah. If we, if we accept this recommendation, all those places that we were talking about adding lights are still in the blue area. It would still be masked lights.
That is correct.
Okay. So the whole discussion about we're going to save a lot of money is not even relevant because all of those intersections were, are going to continue to be masked lights. So now what we're talking about is undeveloped areas. So the only person who's saving the money in this is the development community. They're the ones that pay for the lights when they go in. If a developer develops all four corners of an intersection in a planned area development or in a, a master plan, they pay for the entire traffic signal. Correct? Generally.
Yes.
So that's what we're, that's really the impact of what we're talking about. So it's great that, that they're cheaper and all the rest of that, but we're talking about changing the personality, and if we're doing it for the money, then that's the wrong reason. If we're doing it for other reasons, then I'll fully support the majority of the council. But please just make sure that we're not thinking we're going to be saving all kinds of money. We can drop traffic lights all over the place, because that's not the recommendation.
I guess it's my turn, isn't it? I have a question on, we talked about the standards of the new, of the ones you're presenting tonight. What would be the wind velocity that would change or take one of those down? Because during this monsoon, we've lost a lot of trees in the area. And so I look at that as, some of these trees have been there for a long time. I know some of them are shallow roots, but, so that's, that's a question I would have. And I know you can't answer that tonight, but I would, they must have some, some stats out there on the wind velocity and what, how high the wind would need to be in order to take a pole down or to damage it. I mean, I've seen them, you know, if you look at, when we have storms, on the other side, we don't get all the rain and, and the wind that they get, but I do watch it on TV, and everything is moving like this. And so I just question that. So that's one of my questions. You can certainly answer that later, when you have that information.
Yeah, Mayor Lord, there, there's an agency called ASHTO, A-A-S-H-T-O, and they have, like, standards for design and, and wind and, and...
But I'd like to see the comparison of the two.
Absolutely. But, but they, they would, they would be designed to the same winds, and there's one wind standard that you design to, and then they would, they would be designed to the same wind standard, and, and the structures and the foundations and everything else are designed to meet that standard.
Yeah, I can understand that. I can understand what you're saying, that, I appreciate that, but one is thicker and deeper. One is more dense and stronger, so it can't be the same. So I just, I just need to know that from the other side of the valley. I want to clear this up, and, because I've had a discussion with, before, about who makes the decisions. Planning and zoning are very, very helpful, and they really do dig into things for us, and they bring it. They're not the decision-makers. And I've had a planning and zoning person send me a letter and disagree with one of mine, and ask me why I did that, and why I went against them. So I don't want the information to get out that that is the decision-maker. That is not, okay? They're the investigators. I appreciate them, especially when you have a lot of development going on. They pick up things we might not pick up, but they are not the policy people. We are. That's the first point. Second point is, I do like, like you said, Joanne, I do like the structure of the ones we now have. I look at by McDowell and Bullard. I look at by McDowell and Dicert. I think those are very impressive. That's dense retail. And in industrial, I think that says something. I think it's some strong, something there. In the communities, I agree, these new lights would be perfect for them. I don't think that we need to put a stamp of, it's got to be all the same in our city. People are not the same. People don't have the same taste. When I sold homes, it's amazing, the different tastes people have in the interior and the exterior, and I don't care, in one neighborhood. And in one neighborhood, they may get irritated at somebody else because they got something and they didn't get it. It's life, you know? You have to have variety. And we did say, this year, we all agreed that we needed to be more flexible in development, right? In the West, when they're coming up with this new area, I'm so excited, I wouldn't want to have to put one of our standard signs in the middle of that just because we're going to treat everybody the same. People dress differently, they go out to different restaurants, they make different jobs, they make different money. We are all different. The main part of it is that we have a quality of whatever we put in looks good and meets the standards. So that's, that's how I feel. And I kind of agree on some of those off communities, how fun that would be, be able to remember. They did it up in Australia, right? Our lights that they put up there, the developer wanted a certain kind, we went through that all. You remember that. So when they say, "We've never done it," yes, we have done it. So do we, do you have enough information to know? Because it really was varied tonight on how people feel. So what'd you hear, City Manager?
Okay, I will, very, very, very interesting discussion, and appreciate all the different points of view. And I'm, it's, I will look at it this way. I think there's consensus to look at the ADOT styles, that's, that's what I'm hearing. The, the one question that still remains is, the example that's up there, is there support for this or not? It's, it's come, it's, it's clear that there's an edge for looking at the ADOT lights in some of the new areas. That does not preclude the modular style from still going into the blue areas, and we're strictly looking at those in green for ADOT at this point. So it's two things. One is there's support for change, I think there's consensus there, and then the other one is, what about the recommendation for location?
Okay, so I can't, I can't vote, so I'm going to look at you. I'm going to say, how do you feel about change?
Change is good. I like, change is good.
Change is good? Now, we're talking about two, okay, I can't, go ahead, just, you know, give me a, give me a hint.
Well, oh, I, I, I think that we've all stated our feelings. I mean, I think there's openness for change.
I'm just asking you, is change good? Just give me something.
Change with a framework.
Okay, but just, give me, give me a...
Frame or city.
I'm just asking change. Yeah, I know. I'm looking this way. I'm looking this way. Change?
Well, I see change is good.
Change?
If you're...
Change, change.
I just ask if change is good.
We're going to bring this back, and so we need, we need, you know, we...
I suggested a little bit of both.
And I think you're going to get that. I can't guarantee it, but I, I would say that is change. What was the second thing? Where are we?
The second one is the exhibit that is up there. This is where the change is recommended to occur, occur, that was a tough word, in the green areas is where the, it's proposed for the ADOT style. So again, it would not change anything in the blue area where, so modulators would still be installed under this proposal.
And we're really talking in that area, a lot of homes and communities and...
Yeah, West Goodyear and West of Cotton Lane.
That's where our people are living, in those areas. It's not so much commercial or industrial, is that correct?
And Mayor, is that the area where we had the West Goodyear presentation, and they showed us pictures of perhaps homes in the middle of a farm and that sort of thing?
Uh, yes, for the south of 10 area, yes.
And that would be the, the green?
Correct.
I'm in favor of that.
So we're not voting tonight, so you will be bringing something back to us, so that you can present it, so it gives the people that are kind of on the fence maybe a little bit more strength and, and knowledge of what they're voting on.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
For the ballpark village area, is that an area we would consider, depending what type of development goes in, that we would look at both options, even though I think it's in the blue area from here? Is that an area we could consider looking at either option? Because...
Yes, that is correct.
That might be a little odd.
On the arterials, we would want to stick with the modular, but embedded within the, the areas of the ballpark where you would have the residential pieces and the different development pieces, that's where we're talking about using something different.
Okay, even though it's in the blue area, that area, we could still look at that.
Okay, that would look nice.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, if I may, you'll see in the, even in the blue area, you see the yellow dotted area?
Yeah.
So that's in the ballpark village, so that is looking at having a different standard as well, even though it's in the blue area.
And it should be, by the nature of the business. Bill?
So if we're aiming to change that one particular area, are we then talking about updating our code, policy, et cetera, to allow that flexibility that we talked about with Christopher? Is that part of this whole discussion as well?
Part of the discussion is yes. We would then go back internally and figure out where we needed to make any updates with either the engineering standards or with the Development Services Design Guidelines, yes.
So that could be allowed anywhere in the blue area, not just the ballpark, is that?
What we would do is, we could be very specific on where we would allow changes.
And we can, you can, a deeper discussion when it comes before us, all right? Thank you very much. It was a very spirited discussion, I think, tonight, and I think you heard a lot. We have about two minutes, but we have to start the next meeting, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting to go to the dius. Meeting adjourned.